Everyone and welcome and thank you for joining us today for our joint study session between the Town Council and the Complete Streets and Transportation Commission. This is the second of our joint sessions that we have been doing where we get to hear from the commissioners themselves on their upcoming strategic priorities that are in line with ours and have a discussion on how we could be working together so that we can maximize our impact and really enhance the services that we're providing to our residents and businesses. So, thank you all for joining us tonight. And with that, I'll ask our clerk to do a roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll start with the Commission. Bob Buckston. You're muted.
I'll get it. President.
Thank you. Jeff Thompson, Chair.
Here.
Okay. Rob Moore.
Here.
Bill Elers.
Here.
Gillian Verga, Vice Chair.
Here.
Adam Moore.
Here.
Peter Hurtan. Okay, we'll move on to Council. Councilmember Aristo.
Here.
Councilmember Huddis.
Here.
Councilmember Badami.
Here.
Vice Chair Rennie.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Sayak.
Here. Thank you, everyone. And before we begin with tonight's study session, I will open the offered, open for the public to speak. I only see one attendee, but in case there is anyone else that would like to speak or Ms. Lombardo would like to make comments, just raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll close verbal communication and we move to other business. And as I said, tonight, we're going to talk about our Complete Streets and Transportation accomplishments and goals. And Director Morley, if you wouldn't mind kicking off with a staff report for us today.
Thank you very much. First off, I'll start with my apologies to the Commission for the mix up on the link, but I am proud to be here with the Commission. And this is one of the two best Commissions that the Council has. And I'm probably biased because I'm the staff liaison to both of them. But I think you'll have a great conversation with the Commission tonight about their priorities and what they're looking for. And I know they have some questions for the Council. We did want to mention that there's a great team with the town that supports the Commission, including Sergeant Bormer with the Police Department and his team, and a number of folks on my team that that are always there to make sure that the Commission has with the need, including County Attorney Near, Wujia Kim, and our Transportation Mobility Manager, Yang Smith, as well as our admin staff, currently Meredith Johnston is our admin that really helps to get the meetings organized and in place and happening. So, it wouldn't happen without all of the contributions of them. And so with that, I know our Chair Jeff Thompson has some information to share with you. And that concludes my staff report and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Director Morley, and thank you for recognizing that what happens at these meetings is after many, many hours of staff time, Commissioner time, and Council time. And so I appreciate you recognizing the many people that are behind their names and not necessarily on the Zoom window, but are definitely contributing to our accomplishment. So, thank you. And Chair Thompson, welcome. We would love to hear from all of your Commissioners. And so if I will defer to you, but if there's an opportunity for all of your Commissioners to introduce themselves, that would be great, too.
Okay, yes. Why don't we go ahead and introduce the Commission first to start with? And although you saw some of us with roll call, but at any rate, let's start that off. I'm Jeff Thompson, and I'm Chair this year for the Commission.
Welcome.
Gillian, are you?
Yep. I'm Gillian Verga. I'm Vice Chair this year. I was on the Commission last year, but that was my first year serving on a Commission for the town.
Okay, Bob Buckston.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I was on the Transportation and Parking Commission for four years, the last two of which I was Chair. I was nominated to be on this Commission and was Chair last year, their first year. And I, it's a very exciting Commission. And thank you, Director Morley, for the recognition.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And then Bill Elers.
Hi, Bill Elers here. Been on the B-PAC for three years, I believe, and now CSTC. I'm officially the VTA B-PAC representative just recently. That's kind of cool. And live here in Los Gatos, cyclist, and want to get people out on bicycles and pedestrians.
Thank you. And Peter Hurtan, has Peter joined? I don't think Peter has joined. Our newest member is Rob Moore. We're very happy to have Rob joining us. Just has attended one meeting, as a Commissioner, has only attended just the last meeting. But, Rob, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. It's been great so far. I've been very welcome. So, thanks.
And if I may, Mayor, thank you. Peter Hurtan has just arrived.
Thank you.
Oh, great.
I'm here.
Okay.
After struggling, let me tell you, it's not unique to the Los Gatos town council. We have the same problems at the school board.
So, Peter, we're just introducing the Commissions. You are just now introduced, Peter Hurtan.
Unfortunately, they know me too well.
Very good. And then also, very happy to have a Youth Commissioner, Adam Moore.
Yeah, I'm Adam Moore. I'm the Youth Commission Liaison. This is my second year with the Commission.
Thank you all. Welcome. Thank you for your service.
So, I'd like to start off, I have a couple of things I'd just like to kind of start us off with, if that's okay. And I, first of all, would like to thank the Town Council very much for this meeting. I think it's a great idea, time to talk about this coming year together. So, we really appreciate that. The Complete Streets and Transportation Committee, Commission was started 15 months ago, and it was formed by combining the Transportation and Parking and the Bike and Pedestrian Commissions. And in that last 15 months, we've accomplished a number of things, as identified in the report from Director Morley. So, I won't repeat them all now, but I would like to highlight a few of them. First one is, we identified a comprehensive list of improvements in the Los Gatos Creek Trail. These go from minor ones to more major ones. And we thank, the Commission would like to thank Commissioner Elers for spearheading that effort. He went out on his bike and took lots of pictures. And also, the PPW staff who actually picked it up, picked up all the items and put them into a spreadsheet in his tracking progress, and they did that very quickly. So, we're really happy to see that. The Commission also supports PPW staff in community engagement and in Town Council meetings, speaking up in support of some of the Connect Los Gatos projects, including the Blossom Hill Overcrossing at Highway 17, Winchester Complete Streets, and the Blossom Hill Traffic Calming. These items for the Commissioner are really mostly in a support role for the PPW staff. Going forward, post pandemic, which will hopefully be soon, hopefully in a few months we'll be there, we expect to take on bike valet, bike and pedestrian counts, parking counts, and walk audits. And these activities would be where the Commission is really directly engaged and is actually involved in doing the actual work for those items. As I've just mentioned, it's great to have a Youth Commissioner on the Commission. We do put the Youth Commissioner on the agenda early so that we'd be sure, we're sure to have time to engage with Adam before school starts and he has to leave. So, anyways, we really appreciate that opportunity. Okay, I'm going to go on to our Complete Streets and Transportation Commission priorities for 2021. Our priorities were attached in the packet for this meeting, and I wanted to highlight a few of the items there. First of all, we're actively making an effort to view all of our projects through the lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We consider ourselves to honestly to be in a mode of education on this topic for our Commission. And to this end, we're attending the UCLA Perloff Lecture Series on Race in Transportation. This lecture series was identified by Vice Chair Verga, and the report from Director Morley does summarize some of the insights from the series. And I'd like to highlight a few of those, that the series identified as inequities in the past in larger cities. Some of these are including infrastructure decisions, for instance, where freeways get located. And in some cases, freeway locations have caused greater harm to communities of color who are not as well engaged or lacked political representation. Interestingly enough, one presenter showed a slide of the Bay Area, which was of local interest to the Commission, showing where Black and Latino cyclists face disproportionate crash risks. Another equity inequity highlighted in one of the talks was in Chicago, where in the past, traffic enforcement stops were used for discriminatory criminal screening rather than safety violations. And that highlights the tension, as the speaker noted, between individual freedom and enforcement. Another speaker identified that personal identity and neighborhood culture can affect the individual perceptions on safe travel, either by walking or bicycling. They noted that people typically ride bikes on sidewalks if they perceive this as safer than on the roadway, even though in fact, it is usually not safer to actually ride on the sidewalk. So, that's just a few highlights from our, from this UCLA Lecture Series. They're very interesting, and luckily, they're saved on the UCLA website, so they can be viewed later if anyone is interested. So, on to topic one of our 2021 priorities document. We plan to strongly support the active PPW projects for Connect Los Gatos and other projects. This is mainly a support role for the Commission, where the PPW staff is really doing the heavy lifting day by day to move these projects forward. One of the Commission's top priorities is item number two, is to assist with the Lynn Avenue Greenway project located by Union Middle School. There's no sidewalks on Lynn Avenue right now, parked cars. We've heard from Kevin Royal, who has advocated for this greenway for the neighbors in the area to convert the PG&E Tower corridor to a greenway to allow student traffic to walk or ride their bikes up to Pinehurst and then on to Union Middle School. Interestingly enough, Mr. Royal just recently worked with 10 volunteers to spruce up an area next to Los Gatos Almeden Road, which I just read about on next door, just like a day ago. He's, he is, appears to be very active in, in some transportation issues. So, we appreciate that. We plan to engage in assessments of bike parking in shopping areas within the town, as well as we can plan to conduct a downtown pedestrian assessment. And these are projects where the Commission members will be actively doing the work in between meetings to do those assessments. So, that summarizes our priorities. But if I could, I'd just like to take a few more minutes just to identify five specific topics that we'd like to hear from the Council on for this meeting, which we, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to dialogue about these issues. So, the first one is that we know that Town Staff is embarking on moving forward with the initial steps identified in the Dixon Parking Study. And we've talked about high school parking as well, and we think that the high school parking should be part of this discussion. So, we're wondering, how can our Commission best assist staff and the Town Council with parking in town? Second, we think that one of the highest priorities among town residents is the challenging problem of traffic gridlock, when it occurs due to beach traffic, school traffic, or rush hour traffic. And so, we'd like to know if there are specific items that our Commission can help, that we can do that would help address this issue. Third, as noted before, we feel like we're still in an educational mode with respect to DEI. And if there's specific guidance the Council can give the Commission to engage all of our projects from this perspective, then that would really be helpful for us. Fourth, engaging with senior residents is a strategic priority listed by the Council. And so, we're wondering if you can identify any specifics in the area of transportation for seniors that the Commission can engage with. And then lastly, the Commission plans to stay focused on the major Connect Los Gatos projects already in progress with PPW, which again, includes the Blossom Hill and Highway 17 Overcrossing, Winchester Complete Streets, and the Blossom Hill Traffic Calming. And we'd appreciate hearing from the Council regarding how the Commission can best assist for those projects as well. So, I, sounds like a lot. Hopefully, we can get through some of those, or hopefully all of them, I'm not sure. But at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting back over to our Mayor and to help guide our meeting. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. And as you, as you've probably heard, when we did our strategic priorities meeting, the Dixon Study was always being referenced. And I know that is something that we have of mutual concern, that that actually get implemented quickly and efficiently. But I will open up now to Councilmembers for immediate questions and thoughts. And, and I appreciate the Commission providing some questions for us to give consideration to. And I'll be asking Councilmembers to, to also weigh in on those. But first, Vice Mayor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out, and thank you for, thank the Commission for the Lynn Avenue Greenway idea. I lived on Pinehurst for 14 years, and Lynn is particularly interesting conflict between lots and lots of kids walking down that street, but also the mothers rushing down the street to get their kids dropped off, and there's no sidewalks. And so, that was something that early on, when I joined the Council, I was thinking, you know, we need to find a way to get a sidewalk on that street to make it a little safer. And I'd never thought of using the PG&E right away. So, I think that's kind of a brilliant solution. And I wanted to thank whoever came up with, with that idea. Then the other part I wanted, I know they're working on a community garden also in that PG&E right away. I assume the community garden's going to be on the west side of Pinehurst, so it's not, not a conflict or not, doesn't have to be involved in the design. So, maybe there's a question there for, for Director Morley.
There'll definitely need to be some coordination there for the location of the, of the walkway and the community garden. So, two ideas in, in some of the same spaces, and we'll want to work to move them together so they don't conflict.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I'm not sure, you know, I don't want to run over on time, but similar to the Community Health and Senior Services Commission, I was wondering if all the other Commissioners could weigh in quickly on what they see projects or issues or embellish a little more, because I would like to hear from all the Commissioners.
And no pressure if your Chair answered it, but definitely, as we did with our last study session, we are looking for more conversation than our traditional Council meetings, because as a study session, there's a little bit more flexibility. I won't necessarily cut you guys off. So, feel free at any point to just raise your hand and so that we can have that conversation. Councilmember Badami.
Well, I have a question. So, I don't know if Maria was still waiting for some responses. Mine was going to be a question to the Commissioners. Shall I go ahead with that, or were we waiting for responses to Maria's question?
Councilmember Aristo, do you mind if maybe these questions will prompt more conversation?
Not at all, although I see Commissioner Buckston had his hand up.
Okay, thank you. And actually, now that you've pointed that out, I do see people raising their hands in person. So, I'm going to go Commissioner Buckston and then Commissioner Rob Moore.
So, relative to, to the seniors and our strategic plan in yours, the Town Council's strategic plan, which they meshed together quite well, I noticed from your early 2021 to 2023 to now, you've added engaging the seniors. And we have had and continue to have support from the Ride Program. My question is, the Town Council's position on the Ride Program?
And I'm going to go to Rob, Commissioner Moore, after, but if Director Morley or Town Manager Pravetti wants to provide that answer.
Or I'll start. And good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to the Commission for joining us and for all your great work together with the staff. We really, really appreciate it. Well, the Ride Program, as you know, is no longer funded by the town. However, it is still in existence and provides service to Los Gatos residents. So, given our budget challenges and the return on our investment, the ridership was so low that we just couldn't justify the use of Los Gatos tax dollars. But as I understand it, SASE's continued to, continuing to look for other partners, and they're expanding in other parts of the valley, which is fabulous. And we appreciate that SASE is, is still here. But at this point, until we see a better return, I don't see us going back to supporting it financially, at least. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have all discussed this as a Commission, but I think emphasizing accessibility and equity are both incredibly important things in transportation. I think those are things that have historically gotten left behind. And at our last Commission meeting, we had a member of the public talk about some unique ideas about how to make Los Gatos a little bit more accessible for our disabled residents. And so, I think that's a really important thing. And just making sure that anyone who wants to can walk or bike or move about our town. I don't know if you all have any perspective on that, but yeah, thank you.
Definitely. And I will ask our Councilmembers to weigh in on all of those as they go through all the different questions, but it's an important subject that I think we, we should definitely discuss today. And then Councilmember Badami, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, I was looking for some input from the Commissioners on our downtown parklets as far as pedestrian access through the sidewalks and the narrowing of the streets for bicycle safety. Mr. Elers?
So, I think the parklets are a great idea. It takes parking away. That's great. And because it narrows the road, it takes, makes traffic go slower. And cycling should be downtown. I just take the whole lane. That's the safest. And that seems a very clear choice. And I've had a few people buzz by me, but what can you do? So, I'm in favor of the parklets. And for safety, I say it's an improvement, with the caveat that some of the crosswalks, people walk, pop out very quickly, because they're, they're next to barriers and tents, typically by Pedro's, I believe. The Los Gatos Cafe, that's very tight there. People pop out. So, and then, and I think perhaps you should put the, the signs in the middle of the road that we had before, the crosswalks required signs. Those also calm traffic, because they provide barriers. And it's good to cater that there's lots of pedestrians around. So, I would encourage us to put those signs back.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make a comment on the Ride Program. I think it's a very good program. VTA just gave, I think, about $600,000 to that program to expand it into San Jose and Morgan Hill. And I spoke up in favor of it, because it, you know, it didn't get as good a marks in their scoring system, because it doesn't efficiently move people for low cost, lots of people. But it fills a very important niche of seniors, you know, as people get older and they don't want to drive or can't drive anymore, it really contributes to their isolation. And isolation contributes to declining health. So, it's really important to be able, for seniors to be able to get out. And that provides, especially for low income seniors, it provides an option. It fills that, that niche that's that, you know, we just can't run buses everywhere. So, it, it fills that niche. And maybe in Los Gatos, it hasn't been needed as much as, as Town Manager said, that, you know, the, the number of people riding it are smaller. But it is a wonderful program to really fill that niche, especially for the less wealthy that maybe can't afford to call Uber all the time and so forth.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for those comments. Councilmember Huddis.
Yeah, thank you. It's a real pleasure getting together with this Commission. And it's my real first opportunity to interact. So, I just want to thank you for everything that you've been doing. This Commission has really been leading the way on a lot, a lot of issues. I wanted to respond to two questions that were brought up by Commissioners. One with regard to the Ride Program. As the Vice Mayor has said, it does satisfy a particular need among seniors. And I think there is a role for it that we should continue to look at. But, but understanding that it also is somewhat limited. I did a survey of a couple of hundred seniors in the community, and very few even knew it existed and were not that interested in pursuing it. However, there was a lot of interest in Uber Lyft, except that it's too expensive, and some of the folks can't use the app very well. So, the thought was to potentially fill another senior transportation set of needs with instructions on the app and encouraging the businesses and healthcare providers to provide vouchers or discounts for the use of those, those services. So, it seems as though that may be another area to explore and maybe one that would get very broad acceptance and enthusiasm from our senior community. The other, the other point that was raised by Commissioner Rob Moore about accessibility, and I think that the, it would be really valuable for the Commission to continue to pursue this, particularly, we have a group in town headed by resident Nick Struthers, who's interested in improving handicapped access for those in wheelchairs who need a little more space. And there's been an idea about a pilot project to create more space for certain handicapped folks in town. So, I would encourage the Commission to maybe look a little deeper in that. I believe that Commissioner Buckston is familiar with this one as well.
Commissioner Moore, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I actually met with Nick on Monday, and he, he had a lot of materials and was super, had clearly done a lot of research on this idea. And I, I think I'm mostly curious how you all see that idea, because I think it's a really good thing to at least explore, especially because it's what our residents who need access to that are telling us. And so, yeah, is that, is that something that, that Council would potentially be interested in looking into?
Well, I'm just speaking for myself. I raised it. I'm very interested in it. And I'm sure that you all have much more expertise than I do.
And so, for procedural, and I'm looking at our Town Attorney, just so- And so for procedural, and I'm looking at our town attorney, just so, because there are specific actions that we can necessarily agree to today since it's a study session. But again, there's opportunities through your staff liaison to vet these things and bring them to us so that we can actually have action if there is specific action and or discussion that arises from today's discussion. But thank you. And then Commissioner Buxton?
Just real quick, since Councilman Hudes mentioned my name, we started working with the the Nick Struthers United Spinal Association. They made a presentation to our commission last November, which I think you'll see noted in our minutes. And we're moving ahead and working with staff and Mr. Renelli on the subject. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. Yeah, I see a lot of what this commission is doing aligning with so many of the town council goals in terms of transportation, equity, diversity, seniors. And, you know, the things that struck me, there was a question about, you know, work that the commission can do with seniors. And I think the work that was already started with ADA work and access not only helps out with seniors, it helps with everybody. So it's equity. And as you do the walking audits, you know, what you see is when you make things wheelchair accessible, you also make them stroller accessible. We, you know, anything, when we improve our infrastructure for the most vulnerable users, we make it better for everybody. And, you know, as we increase bike lanes, we make the sidewalk safer because cyclists feel safer being in the bike lanes off the sidewalk. So it's a whole virtuous cycle. And I really appreciate all the walking and hands-on work and observation work the commission does. So I think the ones that relate most to seniors would be, you know, while the town's not funding it, the ride program still exists and VTA is moving forward with it. So maybe getting that information out. And then tonight later at the seven o'clock meeting, there is an item for our ADA, kind of an overview and a renewal on there. And I don't know if action items will come out of that where the commission might assist. But I'd be interested to see if there's any follow through there. And then as long as we can make things, you know, safer and more accessible for our seniors, we're making it safer and more accessible for young people, for mothers, for any one of us any day who could trip and end up on crutches or in a wheelchair. So, you know, I think all of this is very important. Thank you.
Councilmember? Vice Mayor?
I think Maria started to answer my question because until she spoke, it seemed very vague. I didn't know what, I think it was said, more space. And, you know, we have a lot of ADA rules now with with ramps and places for cars to park. And so it sounds like what we're going to do is have walking audits and see, you know, where there's not enough space. I mean, I'm not quite understanding the the project and where where we think we're deficient.
And so for that one, should I have someone from staff or the Chair? Chair Thompson, would you like to answer that? And then I'll go to Vice Chair Verga.
Sure. So you're you're absolutely right that we don't know yet where we're deficient. But in order to find out where we're deficient, we need to walk around and find out where are there, you know, signs in the way that would impede someone's progress if they were walking with a stroller or they were in a wheelchair. So that's, we need to get out and walk around to identify these deficiencies. And that's kind of the first step is identify the deficiencies and then meet as a group, as a commission, and figure out with staff, you know, what can we do to mitigate those issues?
Vice Chair Verga?
Um, so I think this may also help answer that question. The other thing that is important to remember for our commission is that our our number one priority is supporting the town projects. And we do really believe that the town projects are the right projects and are moving us towards things like accessibility, equality. If you look at the Winchester Complete Streets Project and the Blossom Hill Bike and Pedestrian Overcrossing, both of those are really about connecting the different areas of Los Gatos together and making it easier for people who are not maybe in the able to afford a home downtown that live in other areas of Los Gatos to be able to easily get into downtown and be able to enjoy the wonderful downtown that we have, be able to get around. I think it, one of the things that we hear when we talk about equity, not just racial equity, but income equity, is that it's important to consider all the different areas of your town and not just focus on maybe the higher income areas. In particular, I think one thing that we've been kind of watching is the general plan. And I know there are plans to put more housing density in certain areas. And it's been a little bit hard to follow along there, quite honestly, because going to the general plan meetings just to extract a very small part information that we need for our commission is not always easy. But my understanding is that there will be more density in areas like along Knowles. And so that Winchester's Complete Streets Project is exactly what is needed to help those people feel part of Los Gatos and have access to the Creek Trail and, you know, and all of those things. So that's been a priority for us and we put that as our number one thing. So we, as commissioners, primarily, the main thing we do is we come to the meetings, we listen to staff reports and we give them feedback. We come to the town council meetings when it's important, make sure that, for example, on the Blossom Hill Bike and Pedestrian Overcrossing, we all thought that was a very important project and we wanted to make sure that the town council heard about that. So some several of us came and spoke at that meeting. So supporting those town projects is kind of our top priority. And then we have some others where we can go out and do things ourselves. But we also wanted to be cognizant that if we spin up a project that we think we can handle ourselves, a lot of times that just creates more burden on staff because now they have to try to help us with that project. And, you know, they are already very busy. So those are kind of a lower priority, things that we're interested in, we want to do. We want to do walk audits, but our top priority is really supporting the town staff. And we think they have the right projects.
Thank you, Vice Chair Verga, and I appreciate you saying that because I do want, one of the priorities with all of these study sessions is to ensure that 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 communication is is consistent, right? So that the council isn't necessarily going off on a tangent that maybe you may not agree with and you're boots on the ground, listening to what the community is hearing. So it's important that we're all consistent. And if we're not working on the same priorities, that's a problem. So thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Risto and then Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. To the point that you brought up, Vice Chair Verga, for the general plan, actually, this Thursday night, we'll be discussing community place districts. And that's what you're referring to, the areas where there might be more development, higher density housing. And they're centered in a lot of cases around shopping centers where we're looking toward mixed use and higher density. So that might be a good focal point for the commission as you're thinking about biking or walking audits. What does it look like there? Does our KNEC Los Gatos program and our Bike and Ped Master Plan reflect our plans for the next 20 years to increase density there? And I can quickly tell you, the eight community place districts identified right now are downtown, Los Gatos Boulevard, Winchester, Lark District, North Santa Cruz, Union, Harwood and Pollard. And, you know, I know from my own experience that we're lacking in sidewalks and bike lanes in a few of those places. But I think, yes, we're looking toward the connection and looking toward where we can improve. If the commission can, you know, either check out what's happening this Thursday night or get that information from Director Morley, I think that could really guide a lot of, you know, chicken and egg as that development happens. Are we making it possible for what we're expecting people to get around outside of automobiles? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the upcoming projects and one of them is the Community Shuffle. It seems to me that that would go a long way towards our strategic goals of DEI and seniors. So I'm probably looking to staff maybe for some type of responses when we can get moving on that because COVID is going to be ending hopefully by the fall. And it'll take a little while to get this up and running. But it seems to me it would be in line with our strategic goals.
So if it's okay with the mayor, I'll chime in here for just a second. So we, we are watching that that priority and we do know that the council would like to move that forward. Community shuttles are extremely expensive. So our first view is how do we put funding behind that to make it, make it successful over time? We've started to include funding for community shuttles in the Transportation Demand Management Plan requirements for some of our developments, most notably, more recently, the first phase of the North Forty. Unfortunately, that doesn't, the funds don't start coming online until, until the the buildings start to be occupied. So there's a little bit of a delay there in getting the funding going. And obviously, it will scale over time. So the initial funding may not be enough to run something that that makes a dent in our need. But hopefully, over time, we'll be able to put some of these together and and have a successful plan that that we can rely on and then meet those needs that you referred to. Short of that, we would need an outside funding source for it. And we haven't been successful in identifying that. Don't think that we're at the point where we'd want to tap the the general fund for that expenditure yet.
Thank you, Mr. Morley.
Thank you. And I'm going to jump in. I've been looking at the five bullet points that you've provided to us. And we've touched on the majority of them. One thing I do want to talk about was the second one was parking integration with the high school. I do think that that's something that we do need to address and resuscitate. There's always that tension between the neighborhoods surrounding the high school and the parking that the students use. I think there's opportunities. I'm hopeful if if the commission also believes that. I know we have a commissioner that plays dual function. And so anything that this commission can do to help facilitate that conversation, I think would be much appreciated, especially in the immediate when people may not be as comfortable carpooling. We might find single drivers utilizing more parking spaces. I thought I'd get a response, Commissioner Hurtan.
Thank you. I, when I was interviewed for this current commission, I remember one town council person who's no longer on the town council, retired, asking a question, okay, what are you going to, now that you're on the school board, what are you going to do to solve the parking problem? And I said, okay, give me a couple of months. Well, within a couple of months, I raised it at a, at a board meeting and I got a resolution supported unanimously by all of the trustees that the high school district would be pleased to participate in any planning activity to to resolve the problems of both the the students as well as the employees in parking off the campus. And in particular, you, some of you may know that I've been reaching out to the vendor who does the parking app for San Jose State and and try to be a bridge in that's part of a competitive bidding activity and and the study by Mr. Renelli. But that's an opportunity for the high school district to become intimately involved in where students and and employees are able to park. So, in fact, the trustees have given me permission to be at least interim, the spokesperson in working with the town for how to move forward on it. So tangibly, what I was hoping would be created would be a study group, an ad hoc committee just for that purpose, of high school town parking integration.
I think that's a great idea. And hopefully, through Commissioner Adam Moore, we'll be able to incorporate some student voices because ultimately, if they don't follow the parking rules, we'll still continue having the problem. So Commissioner Moore, I'm putting you on the spot there.
Yeah, I think the students will be more than willing to help in any matters related to solving parking because almost every student at the school experiences problems relating to parking. So they'll be eager to help solve them.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmembers and commissioners, any other, well, first let me go to the council members. Any other thoughts on the five bullet points that are on page three of the staff report? Councilmember Hudes?
Yeah, with regard to the parking, downtown parking, it seems to me that we may need to do a little more precise focus on the implementation of the Dixon Report because that is going to be key to helping our downtown retail businesses recover in that the, a lot of the parking downtown now is taken up by parklets. And so there seem to be solutions in the Dixon Report for wayfinding and identification of spaces and things like that. And so I'm just suggesting that while the Dixon Report was meant to serve a broad set of issues, we're going to have one very specific one, which is how do we get downtown back in business, particularly the retail side? And so I'm just suggesting maybe there there may be the need to look a little deeper into the Dixon Report and see how do we accelerate? And are there things that we might reprioritize coming out of that report in order to achieve that goal?
Director Morley?
So I'm going to ask Sergeant Borromeo to speak a little bit on this one. So we did do a report on parking to the Complete Streets and Transportation Commission at their last meeting. And perhaps Sergeant Borromeo can talk a little bit about the, what's coming to council and the discussion that that's upcoming.
Thank you, Director Morley, and thank you for the question, Councilmember. So we did do a presentation recently to this commission specifically to get feedback and more as a preview as we prepare to present a staff report to the council on direction. So more specifically, what we did do over the last several months is do an in-depth dive on what the Dixon Report had to review with our downtown study, understanding that we have the opportunity right now to really start a slow and methodical implementation while working in conjunction with economic vitality with our businesses on where to implement, both where to put employees at at a level prior to kind of that emergency get back and start up staffing when we get to that 50 to 100%. So with the primary focus on, which we'll be bringing to the council in probably the next month or so, are the focus on doing employee surveys. So that's going to really focus on getting not just the specific where there is availability of parking downtown, but where employees would prefer to park and get that feedback, plus what the businesses have as far as hours and kind of timing. So we have an understanding of, hey, we can implement a little bit more parking in this general area in the morning for visitors because the businesses are more apps later in the evening. In conjunction with the surveys, we're going to start the wayfinding, which is really just twofold. So the first part is an overview and more of an initial website to get the information out where parking is in town. So people understand where the municipal lots are and where some of our longer term parking is. And then start to work with PBW to identify kind of a branding, which will kind of go across signage and some of the stuff we were discussing earlier with just kind of the equity, getting people into those locations and kind of more of a consistent signage throughout downtown. And then start to move into that implementation of temporary employee parking areas with some of the equipment and stuff we already have on staff and the equipment we already have available to us at the police department and use that as an initial transition, kind of as a litmus test to see where then we can kind of springboard from there as we really start to develop wayfinding, you know, extending from the downtown closer to the high school and kind of moving forward there. and kind of moving forward there, uh, as a quick, uh, preview.
Great. Thank you, Sergeant. So. And actually, Sergeant, while, while you are with your screen on, someone had made a comment about the crosswalks downtown and how there are certain segments where, if someone pops out immediately, it could be, it's somewhat dangerous. And I think Pedro's was highlighted. How, how dangerous is dangerous? Have we had any crosswalks that are problematic where we might have to look at some capital changes? Some infrastructure changes?
Uh, thank you for that question, Mayor. So, um, we have consistently looked and we do bring that apart to the commission to give them an idea of kind of our traffic collisions. And what we do do is look at, um, I guess pooled data. There have been several in some of the crosswalks, but nothing in a consistent level. And most of the time, um, as a part of our focus, at least for motors, when we do do traffic collisions, if it is involving, uh, a pedestrian cyclist or crosswalks. One of the things we really work on is evaluation. So those do get directed to PBW. To kind of get those updates, but at this point, there isn't anything that really stands out, uh, based on what we've had. Obviously with, uh, less traffic on the roadways due to COVID, it changes a little bit, but we do frequently keep an eye on that and work very closely with PBW and the other town departments.
Thank you so much for that answer. Councilmembers and commissioners, any other questions of each other and/or, um, feedback on the upcoming priorities? Based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like we are in alignment. Um, so that makes me feel happy. I'm sure that makes our staff feel happy. But if there's any other areas that, um, that you feel that we should clarify or raise before we conclude, um, I'd love to hear it. Yes, Chair Thompson.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, just, I'd, I'd like to see if we could get a little feedback. Uh, one of the priorities was, um, uh, we noticed that in the bicycle and pedestrian overcrossing over 17, that there wasn't necessarily a ready made access to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. Yeah, you know, you, you can walk down, uh, Robert Road West and, and use the signal to go across and, and access it, uh, that way. But it's, uh, the, the, right now, the access to the trail is through a gated area that's kind of steep. And so we're just wondering if it makes sense to council for us to focus more on a, um, uh, you know, a, a, a better way to access the creek trail from that, uh, overcrossing project.
Councilmembers, would anyone like to respond to that? I do want to, just in terms of safety, um, I think I was with Councilmember Risto one time and we saw, um, a bicyclist go down that steep incline or decline, as you mentioned, and crash into the river. So, I mean, it, there is a safety element there that I hopefully can be addressed sometime soon. Yes, Councilmember Risto?
Uh, yes. I mean, I think that's a really good point brought up by, um, Chair Thompson. I, you know, everything we do with the Bike and Ped Master Plan and every implementation we do, I always, um, use the analogy, it's like putting together a jigsaw puzzle. So, you know, you get the pieces in place and then you work on the connections and we get all the other parts. But I think that ultimately will be an important connection because this bike and ped overcrossing is going to be for all modes of active transportation. And that access to the creek trail on the south side of Blossom Hill Road is not easy for people that have any kind of mobility issues. And yeah, as the mayor and I watched somebody go right off the trail down the hill, it took us a while to rescue her. But, um, you know, that, that would not be wheelchair accessible. That would not be stroller accessible. And so that doesn't mean that we don't do the overcrossing. There is an inconvenient way to connect, but ultimately I think that is a great identification for a project at some point.
Vice Chair Verga.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I was just gonna say on that point there. I believe there would be enough changes needed that, that it would be a capital project that would require planning and design. And I see Director Morley as his hand raised. He's probably gonna tell, say, all of those same things. So that is the one thing I think the commission has identified that we potentially would want to prioritize that is not currently planned as a town capital project. And, but I do think it's really important because if we have this bridge in place and we have a lot of kids, um, or anyone, but in particular, school traffic. Connecting to the trail to get the rest of the way home, we're gonna want to improve that connection.
And Director Morley.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to take a second to, to highlight the, how much we do rely on the, on the commissioners at the, at the meetings and in between the meetings to provide us information exactly like this. Which is areas that they see as, as high priorities for them. And we look for opportunities to program that into, um, in, into the future of what we're, what we're working on. Uh, in this particular case, at the, um, at the end of the calendar, every calendar year, we ask the commission what, uh, what capital projects they might like to see us consider for the next CIP as we're making that proposal to the council. Uh, and so these are the kinds of things that make it onto that list. Whether they make it into the CIP is, is, is a more lengthy discussion because we have so many priorities. With, with more limited funding than we, than we would like. So we do like, we, we do like the, the idea of, of putting this on the list. You'll see it in the, in the CIP list. Uh, whether we recommend it for funding or not this year, um, is, is another question. We'll have to see what, what the funding looks like. We do also use this as an opportunity to identify, um, grant, uh, grant opportunities for these kinds of projects because they do have a good synergy there. So it, it, it gives us something else to be on, on the lookout for. And then with that on priorities in general, you know, the, the, the commission is, is so broad in what they do and there, and there's so many things that they, that they touch. Um, we, we really, sometimes our priority setting sessions are, uh, on an annual basis are really what, what falls off of the list versus what goes on the list. Uh, because there's, as, as the vice chair, um, of the commission mentioned, there's a, a limited amount of resources amongst the commissioners and amongst the staff to be able to prioritize everything. So it can be a difficult discussion and we find that the commission's much more effective with a handful of priorities versus a long list of priorities, uh, it gives us some opportunities to focus. So all part of our decisions and, and our discussions, uh, annually as we set the priorities. And we'll be looking forward to I think renewing our, our commitment to the, to the priorities at our next commission meeting. Uh, and, and determining how, how we're moving forward, given the input that the council provided, uh, at the study session today.
Thank you, Director Morley. And, um, we, we do have a hard stop soon. And so I, I just want to end by thanking all of you for your service. As we have all already indicated, this commission is one of our more robust and we appreciate the work that you have all done. I appreciate particularly the lens that you are looking at through a DEI lens. And look forward to that conversation of how you prioritize the many capital projects, ensuring that all of our residents are serviced and that no one geographic nor racial nor socioeconomic. Community is, is benefiting at the detriment of another. So thank you very much for your service. And I hope you, I hope you understand how vital this is, this role in this communication and that you can call on us at any time. Okay. And, uh, councilmember and commissioners and, and town staff, any last parting remarks before we adjourn tonight's study session? Okay, seeing none. Thank you all. And I'll see some of you in a couple more minutes. Bye.